Adam Clerk.
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building. The township website electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers indicating that this work session, regular meeting would take place in the municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation by Councilwoman Francois. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America for which it stands.
As we gather here today as members of the Township Council, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to our fellow citizens and to our community. We always keep in mind the enduring values of life exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make it a better world. Amen.
Adam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Barison.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yeah.
Councilmember Batasnik. Councilwoman Pruitt. Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Yeah. Councilwoman Udine is caught in traffic and should be here shortly. Commendations and proclamations. Councilman Vasanella, you are up. Your turn at bat, so to speak. Oh, Councilman Wright will join him.
So, Councilman Wright there, another baseball.
I'm with him.
And football. So tonight, we're here to honor what's called 14U, which is, I'll let the managers explain exactly, but fellows who've been in Little League for quite some time and perhaps moving on and playing next year, high school, I don't know all your ages, but they did a remarkable thing this year for the first time in 70 years. That's how old our Little League here is. Technically, they go by Babe Ruth Baseball. Many people still refer to them as Little League. I'm going to read this commendation and have them come up and receive, each of them receive individual commendations, and I noticed a couple of the coaches and manager here, so hopefully they'll give a little insight to what they had to do to get to this point. If I mispronounce anybody's name, I apologize, so I'm going to try. The Franklin Township Baseball League 14U team, known as the Franklin Warriors, qualified for the Babe Ruth World Series for the first time in its 70-year history with titles in district, state, and Mid-Atlantic Regionals. And whereas the Franklin Warriors, under coaches Harpreet Moreau, Rick Gurlik, and Steve Ziegler, along with team manager Rob Rooney, are being honored and recognized for their outstanding 2023 season and for making it to the Babe Ruth World Series Quarterfinals. And whereas the Franklin Warriors consist of Alex Franco, A.G. Estevaz, A.G. Huber, Avir Moreau, Avery Perry, Chris Muniz, Chris Ostrom, Christian Jakus, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, Dylan Shaw, Jack Glenn, Kelvin Houston, Patrick Ziegler, Seben Eastman, Shane Rooney, and Stanley Madeira. Now therefore, we, James Vasanella and Carl Wright, Councilman, and Philip Kramer, Mayor, on behalf of the Franklin Township Council, congratulate the Franklin Township Baseball League 14U team and their coaching staff for their outstanding achievements and commend them for their sportsmanship and leadership. Congratulations, guys.
We can do better than that. Come on.
And I want the coaches to tell a little bit about how you got here, but I want to also mention, I know there's some parents here, and parents, grandparents, friends, relatives. Having played in Franklin Little League in the 70s for, I think for the entire time I was allowed, from minor leagues up to senior leagues, I know what it takes just to play one season. I know many have been playing many seasons, and the dedication just to play the season in Franklin, and then to go on to these tournaments and do what you guys did is absolutely remarkable. So congratulations, and you made us proud. I know you've made your coaches proud, you made the whole league proud, and keep playing and keep enjoying it. So I'm going to turn it over here. Bob?
Yes. Thank you. And thank you to all the council members for having us today. This is really something special for our team. I know that Jim had mentioned that we are 14U. Basically, what that means is that our team consists of players that are 14 years of age or younger as of April 30th. We have players on the team sitting here that are 12 years old, 13 years old, and 14 years old. So it's really a diverse, a diverse age group. One of the things that, you know, I want to say about these kids is that they've been playing together for quite some time, so most of these kids I know since they were eight years old or younger, and the team that we have here started at nine years old. So it was a pretty long, long journey for us. We actually, I don't remember the exact record, maybe the kids remember it, when, in our first year when we were nine years old, I think we probably won like five, three games? One game? I think we won three. I think we won three games. So we were probably about three and 20 or something like that, and so for these kids to work as hard as they did to get from nine years old to where they are today, being one of the top probably five teams in the country, shows a tremendous amount of work and dedication by not only the kids, but also the coaches and the parents that bring them here and to the fields and to the games to play. So just a huge amount of pride and, you know, support from our, our community in order to do that. You know, these kids will play between our team, between our rec leagues here in Franklin, between their high school team, probably upwards of 75 to 100 games a year, and that's, you know, that's the kind of dedication it takes to get to this level and to accomplish what they've accomplished, and it's really a tremendous thing. I will say that, you know, I personally couldn't do this without my coaches who are here, Coach Rick, Coach Chris, Coach Harpreet, and Coach Steve. They've all been here along the way with me in order to bring these kids from where we first were to where we are today as a nationally recognized team. There's a funny anecdote, last year when we started to become this better team and started to get recognized across the region, we went to Regionals, and I think it was Coach Harpreet or somebody was saying that we showed up at Regionals, we beat one of the teams that shows up there every year, we beat them in the first game, I think, three to one, and there was somebody in the stands that said, who is this Franklin team? Where did they come from? And now they know, now they know who we are, because we went back and this year we won Regionals and went to the World Series ahead of all those teams that beat us last year because of the hard work and dedication of all the kids that are here in front of you today. I do want to just say thank you to the Franklin community, because when we did make it to the World Series, which was no surprise to me, but maybe surprised to some of the people that are sitting in this room, that was a tremendous commitment to make in order to go down there and pay the expense for, to be in Virginia for 10 days, commuting, a hotel, it's not all provided to you, you have to pay for it, and the outpouring of support from the community, from, from Ram here, who actually came down and watched the game, which was incredible, saw us beat the Mexican national team, it was tremendous. We actually raised enough to cover the hotel costs for all the families that had to go there after we had already spent a week in Altoona, Pennsylvania, which was also, you know, expense that we weren't, you know, prepared to pay for. So thank you to everyone, thank you to the team, to the parents, to the coaches, and to the community for just all the support. We could not have gotten this far without everybody contributing in the way that they did. So thank you.
I don't know, you guys come up here, they can get a picture of you, and I can give you each one, and I apologize, I was reading the names, I inadvertently forgot, there's two names here, Rosario De Paulina and Aiden Rooney. But can, why don't all you guys come on up? Don't be shy, come on.
Got one for each of you, okay? Come on up on the high end. Good work. Made us proud. Okay? And the one fellow, we're getting the other one printed up, okay? Sorry, got one too few. Did you get one? You get one? Oh, okay, you're Aiden.
Sorry, just, just one last thing that I'd like to mention at the end. We had a player on our team since he was nine years old, his name was Wilmer Reyes. He passed this year from leukemia back in February, and this was for you, Wilmer. Thank you.
Tiana, come on up. So this is a proclamation for a resident of Franklin who I've just noticed doing outstanding work. Whereas Tink's Golden Girls, a nonprofit organization, was founded by Tiana Grisham Tink on March 31st, 2019, and whereas Tink's Golden Girls is an organization whose mission is to empower girls in the surrounding communities with the goal of coming together as one with a hope to create a strong sisterhood within a great, with great longevity, and whereas Tink's Golden Girls provides opportunities to the girls to participate in many different activities, events, and outings, and whereas Tink's Golden Girls provides sessions to empower girls that include discussions on hygiene, self-esteem, friendships, stranger danger, bullying, and etiquette, and now therefore I, Philip Kramer, Mayor, and Kimberly Francois, Councilwoman, on behalf of the Township Council and the entire Franklin community, do hereby extend commendations in the highest regard to Tiana Grisham and the members of Tink's Golden Girls in honor of their selfless dedication and services to residents of the town of Franklin Township. Before I let her speak, almost every time I talk to Tiana, she mentions Kimberly, so I couldn't have presented this without Kimberly. If you have something to say.
I would like to say, first of all, good evening, everybody. So nice to have everybody here today, all the young people. Tiana came to me way before we had the youth center and talked about this vision that she had for, for the Tink's Golden Girls. At that time, we didn't have the youth center, so she really didn't have any place to house her program out of, but she was determined, she raised money, she never asked for anything. All she asked for was a home and a place to run her program. She's a great inspiration to our young ladies, she does a lot of mentoring, she runs her program every other Saturday out of the youth center, she's been there since we opened up the door, and she never asked for anything. She's, she's just a wonderful, wonderful young lady and such an inspiration to all of our young girls, and it's very, sometimes it's very difficult to get the girls over at the youth center. You know, the boys are there playing basketball, but the girls, they, they haven't found a home, and she's been able to give them a home there. So keep up the good work. God is blessing you, he will continue to bless you, and thank you for all you do for our youth here at Franklin Township. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, everybody. I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to work in Franklin Township at the youth center. We were one of the first people in the building, it was a great opportunity, the girls were so excited to have a new atmosphere. I'm just very thankful, this like Franklin Township, I grew up out here, so it's home already, and the girls, like, like I mentioned, a lot of girls don't go to youth center, and this is actually like definitely attracting more girls. We're connecting with other like sport teams at the youth center, so we're also trying to get the girls involved in different sports and different activities at the youth center as well. But yeah, thank you, the mayor, and Kim has been here since day one, and I'm so thankful and grateful for the opportunity. So thank you, guys, and thanks for the support.
Tiana is my representative on the library board, and if she's foolish enough, someday she'll be sitting up there. The next commendation is Daniel Pearson, and I think that, that's him over there, only by the company you keep. Many of you may have heard about him on Facebook. This is a life-saving commendation. We hereby honor Daniel Pearson. This award is presented to Daniel Pearson for his actions that saved two children's lives on September 3rd, 2023. On this day, Daniel Pearson rescued two children from an overturned vehicle after a motor vehicle accident on Cedar Grove Lane. Your heroic actions will always be remembered. Presented September 12th by Mayor Phil Kramer. So the way I learned about it was, my wife forwarded me the link to the, to the Facebook page, and she said, does this deserve recognition? It wasn't a difficult decision. He jumped into a car, he, that was turned over, he, in the dark, had to get out two children, understanding he had to cut the child seat out to do it, and so he likely saved two lives. Maybe you have more about the story to tell. So I'm just proud that people take the time to watch out for other people, and it's, it's just, it's very important. I saw an accident recently, and I, I'm no hero, I just stopped to help the people, and that made a bit of a difference to them. So just look out for each other, that's all I want, and I want to recognize you for doing this. Thank you. Good evening, all one. Congrats to the U14 team one more time. I was fortunate enough to travel to Stafford and at least watch one game against Mexico. We beat them. I think everybody said, as soon as I entered, the luck turned, right? We were down 2-3, and we scored two more runs than up, and then we won. I got delayed getting there, so I wasn't there for the first part of the match, but congrats, job well done, more laurels to accomplish in the coming years, all right? Keep, coaches, great job, keep growing those talents, and make us all proud. Good job, guys. So I'm here to do a proclamation to Buddhist Vihara Temple, if you all know, Route 27 South going Princeton, going to Princeton on the right side, there's this huge Buddha statue, and there's a temple there. The folks there are mostly from Sri Lanka and Nepal, and then, of course, we all go there. Buddha actually was born in India, so we take credit for that, Buddhism, but we don't practice Buddhism in India much anymore. But anyway, every year, the temple there is, holds a celebration, it's a combination of different community organizations from Rotary Club or Alliance Club and a few other, I think the Nepal People's Association, so there's a number of organizations get together and celebrate a day of peace. It used to be called Peace Day, International Peace Day, and now they're calling it something different. It's a community celebration, peace festival is what they call now. So we are going to celebrate that on September 23rd, the same day as the Franklin Day, but I think I will take time to just stop and say hello to the people there. So the proclamation reads, whereas there will be a joint celebration, community celebration and peace festival on September 23rd, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the New Jersey Buddhist Vihara, and whereas the community celebration and peace festival is an initiative to promote joint community service among members of Rotary, Lions, Kiwanis, Somerset County Cultural Diversity Coalition, Friends of Nepal, New Jersey, New Jersey Buddhist Vihara, Nepal Sambhaj, and Non-Resident Nepali Association, and whereas the purpose of, purpose is to elevate the collective social impact of the organizations and promote a spirit of community volunteer collaboration, and whereas organizations will take part in community service to address the needs of their communities as well as celebrate the United Nations Peace Day, and now therefore we, Ram and Barison, Deputy Mayor, and Philip Kramer, Mayor of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, on behalf of the Township Council and the citizens of the Township of Franklin, do hereby recognize and commend the community celebration and peace festival and urge all to attend such a joyous occasion. Dr. Tulsi Mahajan would receive this proclamation.
Well, I guess the community has become a microcosm of 21st century. I mean, 20 years ago, I used to drive all the way to New York to go to Buddhist temple. Now, within the, you know, 15 minutes drive, we have a Buddhist temple, but at the temple, we have started the interfaith peace garden and also open orchard program, so any of you are in the, in a gardening, you like to come volunteer, we have all kinds of symbols from all different faith groups, this is our interfaith peace garden, and in open orchard also, we are planting all kinds of trees. We would like to invite the community, as I said, part of this celebration is, you know, bringing our communities together. 20 years ago, we, I used to run the Franklin, I guess, the Hamilton Avenue, the International Festival. So we have, I have been working with the community for a long time, and now I'm in a back with the Buddhist temple, so I would like to invite all of you to come enjoy the peace garden and then also open orchard. So any, as I said, any one of you are in the gardening, like to do some gardening, it's a peaceful, you know, state, so please come by, and I would like to invite all of you for the September 23rd, which is our community celebration. So thank you again for the council, and the mayor for this recognition, and we hope to work together with the community and with the council for more international events, bringing the world to the Franklin Township. Thank you again.
So for the last proclamation, we have Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but whereas it's the most commonly diagnosed cancer in American men, whereas 288,000 men are diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States every year, and in New Jersey, there's 9,460 new cases a year. If caught early, the five-year survival rate's nearly 100%, however, in the late stage, the five-year survival rate drops down to 31%. Education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and protecting people from the emotional, economic, and social burdens of this disease, and whereas all men at risk of prostate cancer are, are at risk of prostate cancer, so I encourage residents to learn more and get screened. Now therefore, we declare September 2023 and all, and every September going forward to be Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Go out and get screened. Thank you. We are now open for public discuss, or we're now, it's time for public discussion, do we have a motion to open?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And this, for those who don't want to stay for the whole thing, this is a reasonable time to leave. Just saying.
In other words, if you've played baseball recently, you can leave.
Benjamin Guy, 35, Patton Drive, just got a question for most of the town council, and this, some of this will be directed to Bob Lovallucker. Yeah, he said it already, so can you pause the time, please? Can you pause the time? I just want to make sure we're clear, so again, pausing the time again.
We, I, I motion, she second.
Yeah. That's why you dismiss the people, that's why you dismiss this people.
Stay right there, all in favor, say aye. Rose, say nay. You're on.
Okay. So again, I just, no, we're good, we're good, it's fine, it'll be quick. So I just want to ask specifically, one of the, one of the questions is that, what do we do in this town for commitments to what we just seen right here, which is the young people? We, we built the youth center, but it's just a matter of funding the programs to actually expand the town altogether. We still haven't matched what we're doing and looked at appropriations either from a state level or county level to actually support what we're doing, because we've overgrown what our capacity is. And when we have these conversations, it goes unheard of. So one of the reports I just got, because, because indirectly, we just talk, we talk about this indirectly, so we have a food problem, we all know about, right? Do we know this altogether in this, in this community? The food bank is oversaturated with, with demands, and because we have a sort of a regional, regional plan demand over here, we have both the senior community and we have families that actually need a lot of support. The question is, is from a township standpoint, are we talking about this? And we are openly talking about this. I know there's subcommittees and there's other programs that we've been talking about, but are we openly seeing how we can support? but are we openly seeing how we can support this or how, how we can take the benefit of this to actually make sure that we fix this long-term? Because again, a lot of times we put that, we sweep these under the rug, we do a lot of studies and nothing gets done. And the question is, is that one of these problems that we need to do is we need to elevate these conversations to public forums and public discussions openly so that people can support this and move this along. And sometimes this is, this is unheard of. Again, with that, with that being said, just not food deprivation, but also social service deprivation. With us growing so much over the last ten, fifteen, twenty years, we're lacking in the social service demands. And it's being, it's being said more and more times by other, other communities around here about what we're doing. And I want to make sure that it's being highlighted during this period of timeframe to actually make sure that we get ahead of this rather than behind. Because if COVID didn't teach us anything, we need to get ahead of these problems rather than behind these problems. And again, I want to make sure that the town council is actually doing it. That means each one of the wards should be doing an assessment on their different, different things that are going on there for social service demands. Because with Charles, he might have, he might have an immigration, immigration with his, with his West African community that actually needs to be done. Carl with the senior communities and senior buildings, that's in his, his specific wards. And then other, other communities that are all together and seeing how we can actually appropriate and use those specific services to actually make a, a demand and a hub to actually make, fix this problem. I know we, I know we look at a lot of things and we sweep them under the rug, but we need to get serious about what we're doing, going forward at all. And one of the things is when the food problem comes about, that's, that's universal. That's not a colored, that's not a colored thing. That's a universal problem. And if, if we're not looking at it universally, we need to, we need to really think about what we really want to do as a community going forward at all. One of the things I do want to highlight again, and I wanted to make sure that Von Lucker talked about this directly today, is about during Franklin Day, there's going to be a beatment process for, or a conversation about a beatment process for open permits. I know it's not really, really highlighted, but a lot of people are doing building improvements around here. If you have open permits, you need to be talking to the building department about trying to retroactively fix this because if anybody's not aware with them doing the White House, doing a Justice Forty program that's actually there, there are going to be certain terms that are going to be changed for building use going forward at all. And people need to get aware of what's going to go on for your electric prop, your electric, your gas stoves and everything else that's going to be, have to be upgraded over the next five to seven years. So these are things that you need to look at now, not take, and take advantage of these type of opportunities at this specific timeframe. I think that's all my time and I'll go for now. Thank you.
Sir, before you come up, I always give deference to our distinguished visitors. Assemblyman Danielson is here. Do you want to? Okay. How unusual that would be.
Good evening. Piki Anastasakis, three-two-zero-four Enclave Circle. And I'm here on an individual basis, but also as a member of the Citizens Warehouse Action Group in Kanawhaak. And I would specifically like to make a few comments about the, the item thirteen B on the Agenda Ordinance Number forty-four nineteen dash twenty-three, in order not submitting the code of the Township of Franklin to comply, to become consistent with the state requirements with regards to stormwater management. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of our group and on behalf of the Kanawhaak community. We know all too well that every time it rains heavily, Metlers, the corner of Metlers and Schoolhouse Road flood. And in, in a recent incident, as a matter of fact, which I believe Mayor Kramer happened to witness, the emergency first responders and school buses were unable to cross due to flooding. And I just would like to, to read some of the comments from the New Jersey Director of the Sierra Club, which is one of the preeminent environmental groups in, in New Jersey and throughout the country with regards to the need for this particular updating and the stricter guidelines. So New Jersey is long overdue for the climate resilience. Our state will continue, and I would like to add, our township of Franklin will continue to experience severe weather events and one-hundred-year storms due to the imminent impacts of climate change. More floods are being experienced in places that did not flood before. Heavy precipitation episodes are occurring more frequently and more dangerous storms are being formed and impacting our communities. People are suffering because our infrastructure is not equipped to handle this and this rule is the first step to address it. The inland flood rule will update the flood data that we rely on and change the ways we build. And it is that last sentence that I would like to emphasize that we have. And I hope and I know that this council will do its best and the zoning board and the planning board will do their best to plan where we build and how we build because we're experiencing emergencies, not only in Franklin Township, but throughout the country, throughout the state with flooding every time we turn the TV on. There are people here who I hope will speak tonight about their experiences with flooding in our very own community of Kanawhaak. So this is an emergency and I hope that you vote in favor of this particular ordinance and revising the existing ordinance to update it and that it becomes effective as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just by the way, this session is for anything to do with government, so it's perfectly fine that you talked about stormwater. But because it's a second reading, there's going to be a session devoted to it and you, you can come up again actually if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks.
Beverly Lawson, two thousand four Amwell Road. I'm here to clarify from the last meeting that I was at, when I brought up something about the Human Relations Board. My question at that time was, how did people get onto the board when there were previously twelve members and suddenly there were fourteen? And Deputy Ram, I guess you asked the chairperson there, did he say anything? Well, he wasn't the one who mentioned it. It was the two new people and one of the new people just recently moved into town. So normally the boards here are twelve people, but this one for some reason is fourteen. Are we expanding all the other ones to now be fourteen people? So can anyone apply? And if it's more than twelve, it's okay? Because that didn't seem to make sense at that time that people got on and no one knew how when there were no vacancies.
That, I got to ask, or?
Well, we have, we have an answer period after public comment.
Okay. And my other thing is, thank you for the September eleventh celebration. Hopefully in the future, we can actually do it on September eleventh. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Sally Zaharchek. I live at Four Constitution Way in Somerset.
Emma Ray, restart the clock.
Thank you. Sally Zaharchek, Four Constitution Way in Somerset. I, I don't like public speaking. I'm really not very good at it. I've developed a passion for it of recent time, but I am coming to you again today because you've talked about two things that are very close to my heart, that you need to realize how responsible you are as a governing body. You talked about cancer, prostate cancer awareness month. It's a very big deal. It's a very big deal in my family because my husband was diagnosed with early onset prostate cancer. My two sons, early onset prostate cancer, one at forty-five, one at forty-nine. I don't come up here for sympathy. I don't even talk to a lot of people about this. Last month, my son, who's forty-five, received a letter from the city of New York saying that he is now qualified for benefits under the nine-eleven fund because he was right under the Twin Towers when they fell. Both of my sons were. Two of my sons have cancer and my husband is an Agent Orange victim. So we talk about nine-eleven as a community, as a governing body, as a state, as a town. We talk about things like cancer, prostate cancer. I have two immediate family members who are now in a clinical trial at Sloan Kettering in New York because the geneticists have told us over and over again, there are no genes connecting them, three family members with very early onset prostate cancer, that it's environmental. I have spent way too much time with every kind of environmental agency, doctor, geneticist, talking about the environment and how it's affecting us. So yes, it's turned me into a bit of an activist. Nine-eleven, nobody is disputing that the smoke and the, the inhalants that day have made people sick. My son is living proof of it. My husband, nobody denies, no federal government, no state government, that Agent Orange made veterans sick. I am concerned about this town. I have implored you before, I'm asking you one last time. Please remember always your responsibility to your residents and your citizens comes first. I know you all are caring, decent, good people. I hope with every decision you make, with every step you take, you remember that it's incumbent upon you first and foremost to keep your residents safe from toxic emissions, from flooding, from any other harm that can befall us. Because I remember telling my company that was in the Twin Towers on nine-eleven, that it was not a good idea to put people a hundred and one stories above the earth. Where was a fire egress? How would they get out? My background is insurance. I was a risk manager. I look at the whole world through the eyes of risk and now I have to do that for my family. So please, every step you take, think about risk management, think about your citizens and think about what toxic pollutants, what flooding, what other harm can come to this family. We had a gentleman here tonight who saved two children from drowning. We need more people like that. We need more people like you who care and who can make a difference. Thank you.
Michael Hampton, three-nineteen, Shilling Drive. I'm going to be real brief for, only a couple of things. One, the Community Affairs Building, I brought this up with one of the sergeants there, but I'm going to bring it up here because I keep seeing it. My personal opinion is, since that is the one central location in this town where any citizen can come in and file a complaint against an officer, that is not a location in which any uniformed officers should be sitting, looking to make traffic stops in or around Hamilton and Franklin Boulevard, simply because it's a deterrent to anyone that would want to go in to file a complaint, to see a uniformed officer sitting there. When I brought it up to the sergeant, she brought up to me that it's mainly female officers because when they're out, they don't want to utilize the gas station bathrooms that they have in and around that area. And my response to her is the same one I'll give here. If that's the case, we have Health Department, the county does, call them up, find the people, get the bathrooms cleaned so that the female officers can use it, but that's not an excuse. There should be zero fraternization between the people that we have hired as a town to investigate officers and any instances of impropriety within the town. There shouldn't be any fraternization with the people they are supposed to be investigating. That's just my personal opinion. And I'd love to hear from you guys during the question and answer period on your takes on that. My next thing is the lack of meetings. I understand everybody has a life, everybody has things to do, things come up. Last time I checked, everyone sitting up there with the exception of the town manager and our township attorney, you all volunteered and ran for the positions. A month in between town meetings is unacceptable. We've had three people before me come up here to speak about real problems. Twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five problems. All we ask is about twice a month that we have a meeting. There was one meeting last month, I think, that got canceled because we did the community policing thing. It didn't have to be on a Tuesday night. This is our one opportunity as a town to hold you all accountable for the positions we elect you to be in. This should come before anything else in your personal lives and if it doesn't, then you should reconsider the position in which you chose to ask us all to put you in. And I don't speak for anybody but myself. I just think the fact that we're in September and then on the agenda is something about rescheduling September twenty-sixth meeting, which could potentially mean, what, one meeting in September, we had one meeting in August, a meeting and a half in July? I don't know if that would be acceptable to anyone else in the universe that has a job and which they're, answer to people. And I think sometimes folks forget that. You all answer to people. You answer to every single person behind me, myself included. The fact that somebody had to come up here and say, at the last meeting, something got brought up about two extra members, we're a month later. That individual has to wait a month to say that publicly? And if I, my personal opinion is if the baseball team didn't do so well, I doubt we would have had a meeting tonight. My next complaint, since I have about a hundred seconds left. Hey Mark, I'd love to know what's going on there. The Burger King, you have that also, what I thought was going to be a shopping center, kind of off of New Brunswick when you're going towards the ShopRite. It looked like it was going to be a bunch of retail facilities and it's been there for months. And I'm just curious if the town or whoever's ward that is, what's going on? And my last thing is, tonight, when you guys do the question and answer, I would like to hear from every person that was elected to a ward in particular, what's one thing you would like to see changed in your ward? Every time I come to a meeting, I hear you all talk about the parties you've been to, the great events the town has and how everything is so lovely. The town is great. I've lived here my entire life and I'm proud of this town. It's far from perfect. And I've yet to hear any of you, honestly, say one thing that you would like to see changed in the town. I mean, we all come in and complain, but you all live here too. Otherwise, you wouldn't be sitting up there. So I would like to hear from everyone, just one thing that you would like to see either brought to a town, a restaurant. If you don't like the warehouses, say you don't like the warehouses. But maybe for once, we can have an elected official stand on something. That's all I got.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Naveen Menon. I'm from Forty-Eight Treetops. I want to draw the council's attention to a lack of a light at the junction of twenty-seven and Princeton Highlands. There are a lot of near misses that all of us residents see. We have children during the months of summer who crisscross through the housing association and go to the, to get ice cream and other stuff. And it seems to be a, a problem waiting to happen for all the, the speeding traffic coming from Princeton all the way into Franklin Township. So wanted council's attention and on the matter. And I know Ram has had some conversations with, with folks there, but just wanted your attention and see if you guys can do something about installation of a signal, if possible. Thank you.
I gave him a card, Kimmy. Gave him a card. Johnny's Tips, twenty-five, Parkside. Just a couple of things I'd like to mention. First of all, I'd like to thank the township and especially Bob in terms of we are setting up a completely sustainable garden committee in which a number of people in the community. It was a great meeting. We had a great meeting outside. And we, I think it's, it's going to be great. It's, we got it set up pretty good. And, and matter of fact, I have some potential people for the, that, um, um, Lloyd. Potential people. Okay. I also like to. I also like to thank the, I think Joe's still here, and some of the people that understand that some money is coming into township, some youth money is coming into township. And I don't have to tell you how desperately we need some youth money in the township and some programs so we can start saving young black men's lives as well as black and brown men's lives, being that Black Lives Matter was totally about killing of young black and brown men. And I think Somerset, New Jersey has a plan to solve some of those problems. And hopefully, some of the money that came into the community for the youth will be used for such programs. They're being devised and planned now. For that, risk use, and of course, the graduate student students. And that's another thing I have to say, that you guys have to understand that we're going total turmoil in the 4th and 5th communities, 1st and 5th wards, because anybody that graduates from high school, graduate from college, cannot come back home to live. And that's a fact. We cannot come back to Franklin Township and live in our own community because we can't afford no $1,400 or $1,500 a month rent. Now, you're the council council. Now, we have a problem. Your citizens have a problem. We cannot live in Franklin Township. Your rents are too high. Close down the building, trying to go home somewhere. Build a building someplace else. If they're gonna build a building here, make it affordable so we can afford to live in them. Else, don't let, put them out of town. They don't need to be in Franklin Township, if you're talking about taking care of your And the jobs, of course, we know we have to have some jobs. Ron, you know, we're gonna have to get, we need some jobs, bad. We need some training. We need to train our young men for jobs, bad. I'm the Manpower Director of Somerset County for 25 years. I know how to train them. I know what they need to be trained for. Just need the opportunity to do it. Oh, this is the most important thing. All right. Councilman Wright?
My name is Johnny Tibbs. For years, I've been at an adversary of yours because of some of the lack of support I was getting for trying to take care of certain parts of the community and the youth. But I need you desperately to address the problems in the 4th ward. This is some of the things I used to say about you.
Mr. Tibbs, people, Mr. Tibbs, you need to speak into the mic.
I'm burying it.
Mr. Tibbs, please speak into the mic.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If you're on the Scott Boyd, we need you too bad. The community needs you too bad. If you're on the, you're the perfect place when you're on the Scott Boyd. I'm turning up. You're my partner, rest from down this point on. I'm turning it up. I'm burying the hatchet. Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Joe. And I think that was the last thing I did. Yes, that was it. Thank you very much, y'all. Thank you, Kimberly.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? I see no one else coming to speak.
Seeing no one else come forward, I make a motion to close public discussion.
Second. In second in all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public discussion is closed. So, to address some of the questions, Mr. Guy, other youth things that we are doing as far as beyond the food bank, it doesn't always have to be government that does it. There's, where's Mr. Guy? Are you, I don't know where, oh, he left.
He left, Mr. Mayor.
So, I didn't know where to turn my head, but okay, I'll still answer it. Sammy Siobhan is running a group he calls FISC, which is a way to unite all the food bank-like operations and get, make it more effective. We are working with some of the money we've gotten from the federal government and the school to get ZooFol, to do a free clinic for children. We are working with the school system right now to try to put a daycare into the old BOE building. You must have some comments.
The other comment is that Mr. Guy is a member of that ad hoc committee. He was in attendance with that FISC meeting that the board member created. He was there. So, I'm not quite sure why he asked the questions that he did, given the fact that he was invited to attend and participate as a, as a community member on that committee.
It's Francois. Do you have any other youth things you care to add?
What, you mean for food insecurity? One of the things that we put in for the $1.5 million grant that we got from a Senator Joe Danielson is to address food insecurity at the youth center, because the kids come there and they're hungry. So, we got a bunch of money in that grant to have culinary programs for them, to teach them how to cook and what have you, and to be able to provide them meals after school when they come. So, we are aware of the fact that, you know, we do have food insecurity here in Franklin Township.
And that coincides with, on the heels of the Congresswoman, Bonnie Watson Coleman, had secured funding from the federal government for us to also to make improvements at the youth center to be able to serve food with a serving kitchen and warming equipment and what have you. And so, yes, and, you know, obviously, the Assemblyman is here tonight, and I don't think that we hadn't originally planned on discussing this tonight. I know it's on the agenda for a future meeting, but there is funding also from the state to, to provide food for the kids who come to the youth center every day. Meals, not just food, but meals, because when they get there after school, if they take the bus from school and they stay until the evening hours, we would like to see them have a healthy dinner. And on the weekends, we would like to see them have a healthy lunch. So, that's, that certainly is part of that food insecurity issue that, you know, we're making an attempt to address. Mr. Mayor, if we're just addressing Ben's comments, as far as permits are concerned, what he was speaking about is at the Franklin Day Festival, there is, once again, our Construction Department offering amnesty for those people who have done work on their homes without securing proper permits, whether they be plumbing, building, electrical. And you can go to Franklin Day Festival this year at Colonial Park on, hold me to this, the 23rd of September, if I'm not looking at my notes here.
Yes.
Which is a Saturday. Thank you. And meet with members of the Construction Department and talk to them about work that you might have done without a permit. Amnesty, no penalties. You'll have to pay for the permits, obviously, and go through the inspection process and all that is associated with that. But I believe that that's what Mr. Guy was referencing when he talked about Franklin Day and permits.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I want to thank Ms. Francois with the, I mean, with the community center, because again, without her movement on that program, it wouldn't be here. So, we definitely need to give you a hand for securing the grants and making this happen. Thank you.
Okay. Community Affairs Building, that's an interesting point you make. I'll discuss that.
Can I address that, Mr. Mayor? So, it's actually not the Community Affairs Building. It is the Community Relations Bureau, and it is intended to be a building for people to be able to go and the officers who work in the Community Relations Bureau to be able to meet with the public in the building, but also to run their programs. It is their headquarters, so to speak, as opposed to 495 Demont Lane. I think that what the gentleman is referring to is the fact that I believe that Internal Affairs also is housed in that building and a separate part of the building, but in the building. So, while I understand his concerns about members of the public being able to go to the building and not have uniformed police officers, we're not New York City. We're Franklin Township. We have about 108 police officers. Up until we created the Community Relations Bureau and moved them into 935 Hamilton Street, all police operations operated out of 495 Demont Lane. You know, officers need to maintain a level of professionalism, and whether there's an Internal Affairs investigation, the truth is, Internal Affairs complaints, according to the New Jersey Attorney General, do not require anyone to even go to a building. They can do it over the phone, they can do it by mail, they can do it by email. There's no requirement to report to any building whatsoever. If there are concerns that the gentleman has with that setup with Internal Affairs, I suggest that he address those with the Public Safety Director, who oversees the operations within the Police Department. That would be my suggestion there. I understand what you mean. I just think that you should have a conversation with Director Mayweather in reference to your concerns there. That's, that's really the appropriate avenue.
As far as the lack of meetings, at the beginning of the year, we publish all meetings, and we have all of them. The month of July and August and December, we have one meeting, basically, because there's not as much business at that time. Meetings cost money. We're paying that gentleman to video it. We're paying that person, she has a lot of work to do, but she takes a lot of time out of her work in order to do the agenda, et cetera. Meetings cost money, and if you don't need to do them, you don't, if you don't need to do business for the town, we don't have them. Princeton, oh, the number of people on the Human Relations, you're the liaison, why don't you?
Thanks, thank you, Mayor. So, Ms. Lawson, I did check about the number of commissioners on HRC. It is 12. It is 12 members. What you may have heard, the 14 figure probably came from the two high school junior commissioners.
Non-voting.
That they are not regular members, they're not effective, they don't get to vote. But there are only 12 regular members, and the two junior commissioners from the high school we take in every year, so that makes it 14. So, that's where the 14 came from. And, and the process of becoming a commissioner, not just on HRC or on any board or commission we have, is common. It's, it's, there is a form on the website. It's a citizen leadership form. People fill them and send them to the clerk, and the clerk passes to the council. We discuss, and then we, depending on the person, and the opening, we make the appointments at the council. That's how it works. It's not a secret. It's, it's a transparent process. That's how it is done. So, if you wish to become a member, and if there's an opening in any commission or board, you are welcome to apply through the form on the website.
Why don't you continue with Princeton Highlands?
Yes, sure. So, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, could I just get Mrs. Lawson's comments about 9/11?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I was gonna comment.
So, Mrs. Lawson, the reason why the township holds the 9/11 memorial service on an off day and not on 9/11, was at the request of the fire service many, many years ago. As you know, John Collins was a New York City firefighter, and on 9/11 at 6:30, right around 6:00, 6:30, every year, there is a memorial mass at St. Matthias Church that the fire service asked that we not hold our 9/11 memorial service in conflict with their memorial mass for firefighter Collins. So, a decision was made many years ago that we would hold ours in, at the Township Council meeting, and that is the closest to 9/11, which is generally the 12th or 13th, I think maybe the 14th, when it's the longest of the second Tuesdays of the month. So, that's the reason why. It was at the request of the fire service so that they could attend both the township memorial service as well as the memorial mass for John Collins. He was a parishioner at St. Matthias, attended St. Matthias School, so St. Matthias Community holds him very dearly. There's a memorial out in front of the church as well for John Collins, and that's the reason why we hold it on an off day, not on the 11th.
Mr. Tibbs just spent, stepped out. Perhaps you can address, Mr. Embarrasson, you can address the training, job training plans for the town.
Yes, yeah, I will do that as well. So, as for the Princeton Highlands request for traffic light at the entrance, so the township is willing to do our part in terms of supporting that initiative. But what I, there is another development up north countryside, which also is in a similar predicament. In fact, they don't even have a, an exit like you have on the bunker hill from that community. They also made the request. So, the request has to originate from the HOA of the community to Department of Transportation. So, that's the first step. And DOT then requires or looks for township support, which we are willing to provide.
Right.
And that requires some financial commitment in terms of doing traffic study and the 25% cost sharing. We are willing to do all that if DOT would approve the HOA request. So, it's, it's the HOA that has to make the request to DOT. And I believe they look at at least two things from what we know. What is the closest traffic signal to where you want to have another signal? And I think if it's less than quarter mile, I think.
It's by number of feet. Off the top of my head, I don't remember. So, Route 27 is considered a Class IV highway, according to the Federal Highway Administration, and there are federal highway, for, and it's also a federal aid highway. What that means is that the state of New Jersey can make application for federal aid for work on that highway, as simple as paving all the way up to major reconstruction. If you don't comply with the Federal Highway Administration regulations for a federal aid highway, then you, the state could forfeit funding on the highway. What I, what I would say to anyone who's, who, and it's, I'm not about to recommend really exciting reading, but I'm gonna recommend it anyway. If anyone is ever interested in what goes into determining whether or not a traffic signal is warranted at a traffic signal, go online and search for, the federal manual is the MUTCD, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And the chapter on traffic signals will list all of the warrants that can be considered to determine whether or not a traffic signal is warranted at an intersection. And there's, there's the one hour peak, there's the two hour, the four hour, the eight hour, there's the pedestrian warrant, there's, there's all different, there's, I think, eight or nine, off the top of my head. Been a long time since I looked at them. It is very dry reading. It is not exciting. There is no plot. There are no characters, but it will tell you what warrants a traffic signal. So, that, that's something that you can do on your own, but like the council, the deputy mayor, I'm sorry. What the deputy mayor said is true. You should direct, your homeowners association should direct that request initially. I would do a dual request, one to the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation and one to this mayor and council. But it would need to, it would require a warrant analysis study that would need to be done by a civil engineer. And, but that, that's kind of the process in a, in a real, in a nutshell. Okay?
Yeah, so, so that's the process, but we are willing to be with you on that process. Whatever we need to do, we are willing to do that. And I think one, even the crosswalk slightly south of that, I think you would want to make that request as well at the same time.
Nope, that would be good, yes. And that warrant is much easier to meet, and given the significant pedestrian traffic to the bus stop and the fact that it's a park and ride, a recognized park and ride for New Jersey Transit, the flashing pedestrian signal there would be, that's almost a no-brainer. I don't think that there's any heavy lift at all for that. Just pay for it.
So, that's where we are, but you are not alone. There's another community that is in the same boat, and we are trying to help them as well. So, on the Johnny Tibbs question about training, bringing training to town, so we are on the final stages of. are on the final stages of, I guess, confirming initial set of workforce training programs at the Council Auto Building. We have three classrooms there, so we are, Rattan Valley Community College is coming up with some programs to run there in the late fall timeframe, so we will soon be seeing that in town. Hopefully, that will have enough demand, people would sign up, and we can run those That's the closest we could find room in terms of classrooms and space, so, you know, so that's the update on that, and we will say, as for the commuting to that location from your area, we will have to work on that separately, but we want to get something started in town, and that is the best location we have so far.
As far as affordable housing, the prices in New Jersey are outrageous, that's why the Council on Affordable Housing was formed. Franklin has gotten the comment from the judge who was looking at that as being the model town for the state. We went above and beyond, and unfortunately, government can't solve everything, but we've taken huge steps in that direction. And with jobs, it's the wrong crowd to say it in front of, but there are a lot of warehouses coming up in town, and there's a lot of jobs coming up in town. There's many warehouses still in the pipeline, many. There's, I won't go into the details. I think that's-
There was one other question, Mr. Mayor, that I can address.
Go ahead, sir.
So, Mr. Hampton, right, it's Hampton, right? Mr. Hampton asked a question about Kmart, Burger King, and Old New Brunswick.
Oh, right.
All right, so, what I'll tell you about Kmart, Mr. Hampton, if you had been a, an attendee at council meetings here, going back probably a year and a half or two years ago, you'll know that there were a number of meetings in which there were discussions about the Levin Management who owns that property, and their interest in redeveloping the shopping center with a large apartment building in lieu of the wing of Rutgers Plaza that includes Kmart. This council was not in favor of that because they felt that Levin Management could pursue retail occupants of that building more effectively than they were, and at this particular point, it is a privately held property, run by one of the largest retail shopping center owners on the east coast of this country, and they have not taken any further action in moving forward with any application to the zoning board of adjustment, but they could do that at any particular time. That's Kmart. Burger King, on the other hand, that was a failing Burger King for a number of years, and is now being replaced by McDonald's, who has, is tearing down the Burger King and building a McDonald's, and moving across the street from Village Plaza. The Old New Brunswick Road, New Brunswick Road Shopping Center that you talk of was originally an industrial site, it was a manufacturing facility for many, many years, going back to probably the late 60s, if I had to guess based on what the building was. It then went through a variety of applications to the board, the land use boards, for, it was gonna be a charter school, it was gonna be retail, it was gonna be a charter school again, it was, well, now they have an application submitted to the planning board for a warehouse. Again, we can't dictate to a private property owner what they do with their property, that's up to the private property owner. We can encourage them to do certain things, but it's ultimately up to the property owner to make the decision on how they're going to use their property. That particular property owner felt that an application to the planning board for a warehouse, I can't quite see how that's a suitable location or an ideal location for a warehouse, but nonetheless, that's his opinion, and that's what he's currently pursuing, but given the history of that property over the last 15 or 20 years, I'd say he'll probably changes his mind two or three times more before something is actually done. So, that, but that's just my opinion on that. But that's the situation with those properties that you brought up.
Anyone else want to answer any questions? Okay.
I just want to say something about the meetings. You mentioned, Mayor, that we have meetings that are scheduled, they're published for the whole entire year, so we don't change that. And yes, we do have one council meeting in July, and one council meeting in August, and one council meeting in December. Maybe it comes across as we're not doing our jobs, but we are available 24/7. I get calls all the time. I don't necessarily have to be here in this chamber for me to do my job as a councilwoman. So, I just wanted to clarify that, we are here, we are here at your service, and that's why, yes, we are elected officials, and yes, we do have, like, I have a full-time job, I think I have three jobs, I tell people I work, well, I won't say it here, but I do have a saying, but, you know, we do, we do what we can, we do what we can. We, this, we are called public servants, we are here to serve the public, but we do have jobs, and we do the best we can. And in terms of us not coming up all the time talking about what our passion is, or what we believe in, or what we're trying to do, I think our actions speak, our work that we do speaks for the things that we're concerned about, and the things that we champion here on this council. So, maybe we don't talk about it all the time, maybe we like to talk about the good stuff because it makes us feel good. So, I just, I needed to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'll piggyback on that. Probably my weakest capability is being a self-promoter, I just don't do that, but I will promote something. The mayor of South Brunswick called me crazy because I put my phone number up there. So, as you said, I'm available.
There was one other thing. If you're gonna sit tight and hang out until item number 10, the council discussion item, you'll get your answer on why that's on the agenda for rescheduling of the second meeting in September. And I'm gonna just go out on a limb and say that that second meeting in September not only will be held, but it'll probably be held in pretty close proximity to its originally scheduled date of the 26th. I have some inside information on that.
All right. Council comments and reports, I feel like we've already done that, but, Mr. Wright, would you like to go first or last?
Oh, to hell, I'll go first.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. Just to back up on the mayor 30 seconds, I'm on the redevelopment agency here in Franklin Township, and one of the things that we have done with our PMR developer is if you run up and down 27, you'll see some brand-new buildings. They have commercial on the first floor, residential on the second floor, and if you go back behind those buildings, all the way back to Berry Street, you will see residential apartments, apartment buildings. Now, there are affordable housing, can't get around it. There are low-income housing, can't get around it. And if you were here during that time, they came and asked for money from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we gave it up with pleasure because that was low-income housing. Now, can't do better than that. So, that whole complex that we have around that area, and including that behind Burger King, if you notice, there are townhouses back there, can't see them from the front, but there are townhouses back there, and they are but Neiman Wales Park. So, definitely take, you know, go on down and see that because they're there. Moving on, President Percy and the community, I want to thank them for, once again, putting on Week of the People. Once again, that program brings, it wants to bring the people together in the community to celebrate everybody. So, they reach out to everybody, and every year it gets better. Now, back in the day, my wife would tell me that you couldn't get a spot in the park. My father-in-law, who used to be the mayor, would tell you you couldn't get a spot in the park, but we're coming back to a point where you can't get a spot in the park, so we're gonna work on that. Juneteenth, another celebration, and if you allow me just 30 seconds, I want to read something to you. On June the 17th, 2021, President Joseph R. Biden Jr. signed into law the bill that established Juneteenth as a national independence day, June 19th, as a legal public holiday. Juneteenth commemorates June 19th, 1865, the date General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and delivered General Order Number Three announcing the end of legalized slavery in Texas. Historically, it has been a holiday celebrated by people of African descent in the United States, as well as people in Canada, Jamaica, Nigeria, and the United Kingdom, and other countries throughout the world. Juneteenth is also a symbolic date representing the African-American struggle for freedom and equality, and a celebration of family and community. Now, that's from the Library of Congress. Now, it's a big thing, and it doesn't make sense to, I can't read the whole thing, but if they can celebrate it every place else, then why can't we? It took us this long to get to this point where we're celebrating it as a national holiday. So, if they can do this in Canada, they can do this in Africa, if they can do this in the United Kingdom, my God, we can do it back here in America. But, that takes care of that. I want to also bring up, and if I don't do it here, I'm gonna miss it, and I think when they bring up resolutions, Mr. Mayor, if you can pull out AD and pull out AP.
On the consent agenda?
Yes.
Can we do that at that time?
Yeah, no, but I'm just letting you know to pull that out.
Okay.
Yeah, that way, you know, when it comes down to there, you'll-
I guarantee you I won't remember, so you'll remind me of that.
You definitely know I'm gonna remind you of that one. But, I just want to say, everyone talked about during the summer, well, you know, some of you guys take vacations, y'all go away, and I need a vacation too. Okay? I need to get away. And while we sometimes, you know, when you say, well, we should be here working, 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 sometimes we actually gotta get up and get out of here. I got family that during the summertime, you just want to do things with, friends you just want to do things with, and coming here every single Tuesday during those two months, well, three months including December, it just doesn't work. Now, some people might want to shoot me for it, but be as it may, I want those free time for me and my family, just like you get to have that free time with your family. And that's pretty much it, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to get this out quick for Ms. Anne Marie, you know, she gonna jump on me later, so, done.
Terrific. Councilwoman Shepah Houdin.
Thank you. Good evening. Just to add on to that, you know, it seems like we have these meetings, and it's maybe once a month, or twice a month, but as Councilman mentioned, we're always available. We work during the day hours, but I don't think I've seen a resident come back and say, hey, I haven't heard from you in months. We try to respond as quickly as we can, maybe not the same day, but you'll get a respond from us, and our numbers are available on the township website. We issue our business cards at almost every place we go to events, so we are definitely available to you guys. You do not have to come to these meetings to address your concerns, you can definitely reach out to any of us, and doesn't mean you have to be a part of a particular ward. Reach out to any of us, and we'll get you the answers you need. On a different note, I want to congratulate, again, our Franklin reporter and advocate for the 10 years that they're in business, and we celebrated in Franklin Chamber of Commerce earlier, and so congratulations against PJ and Bill. Our school holds a lot of events throughout the year for our kids. You know, you may not have a student in the public school, but these initiatives are done by our students, and all of us went to school at one point, so we all know how important it is to raise funds, and they had one earlier, the Student Council did a fundraiser of car wash, and it was really nice to see the students washing cars and collecting the funds. So, please do go out there, support local community events and school events for our kids. With that also being said, school, it's back to school, and that's why I was late today as well, because work and getting the kids out today, but buses are out, so please be careful. When you see the buses with signals flashing, please stop. I would say try to stop both sides, just so that we can let these little guys out. Sometimes you may not see them, they're preschool kids, so please be careful. I was also part of the last planning board meeting, I went there to support some of the residents, so it was good to see a lot of familiar faces there. I and our deputy mayor met with the Franklin Township Lands Club to brainstorm some initiatives that they want to do with community events in Princeton Highlands, so it's gonna be some really nice stuff that they're working on with the Youth Center, and we'll bring those up as it gets closer to some firm support that they're working on with the Youth Center. I could not attend the 9/11 memorial today because of conflicts, but I did attend one yesterday, and as a saying goes, will never forget. And with that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vasinella.
Yes, Mayor. A lot of the questions asked and other issues have been addressed, but I just want to, again, well, say congratulations to everyone who received the commendation tonight. It's good to hear that the Tink's Golden Girls is continuing and doing well, and I believe Daniel was the gentleman the mayor was honoring for that heroic act. It is nice when people step up, and I'm sure he wasn't thinking about it, but in a way put their own life at risk sometimes just to help somebody else in dire need. The, I believe it's called Community Celebration Peace Festival Proclamation, basically, the group on 27, it's been there for years, most people don't realize, is there in a different kind of way, I'm gonna say more of a spiritual way, contribute to this town on a regular basis. But, I want to, again, say congratulations to the baseball team. I know we honor a lot of teams here, we've had some good teams a few years back with the girls' basketball team, and other teams, and pop Warner teams, soccer teams, I think, but that baseball achievement really was something, I think, I'm positive, the furthest they've ever gone in 70 years, and I think they're the oldest continuously running sports organization for youth in the township, so thank the coaches, thank the parents, and thank the players especially, and I hope they go on to do good things in whatever they get involved in in life, including athletics. There weren't too many meetings in August relevant to committee meetings, but I know September, we have plenty on the agenda, so I'm sure there'll be plenty to report out the next meeting, which we'll be deciding on the date of that meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Francois.
Yeah, I just want to report, we did have a Family Fun Day at the Youth Center this past Saturday, and we had program activities for back-to-school, we gave out book bags, we gave out prizes, we gave out a bike to one young man, he won a bike, and he won a skateboard, so he was like the big winner. It was a great day for him. The kids had a lot of fun, it was very informative, we had a nice turnout, even though it rained and there was hail that came, I'm talking about hail balls that came down, which was unbelievable. But, we had food set up outside, but we had to bring food inside, we couldn't do hamburgers and hot dogs outside, but we regrouped, we pivoted, we got pizza, everybody ate, everybody had a good time, and it was very well-attended. And I want to thank Amazon- And I want to thank Amazon for supporting the youth center and allowing us to continue to give out all the different prizes that we do for the kids. That's a big draw, and it wasn't just so much fun and activities, they actually learned a lot about programs that are going on in the school system for back to school, trying to get them more energized and more acclimated to having to go back to school again after a long, long summer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oni Jaka.
Yeah, Mayor. I want to use this privilege to thank our Councilman Ram for all this effort in getting a right on community college in Franklin, but we need, we still need to do, to do public, to invite the public or give it a publicity for the community, so we'll be able to get the less privileged ones to attend the courses. And at the same time, we need to include certain courses that involve skill training so as to get them prepared for the future. So that is very, very important. The kind of course we're going to prepare with the Carrington Community College. So in my own case, I'm suggesting that the course should be more of a practical training program. That is one. Two, I want to use the opportunity to thank you, Kim. My grandkid, they came from, my grandson came from Washington, D.C., so they were able to attend that program, and yeah, they really, they told me that they enjoyed it. Thank you very much for doing that. Mayor, that is what I have for the night.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Embarrassan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I have, as a planning board member, I was present on the last planning meeting, and I think we have a next meeting scheduled for the 26th, conflicts with our meeting day. But I think, you know, I will be at the meeting because the applicant not give us an extension to move that to October, so 26th, I have to be there for the final vote that would take place that day. We do realize how important it is to listen to the concerns of the citizens on every matter that comes across our desk, so be assured, be care for what you all feel and express. So I did attend, there was another Sewage Authority Board meeting on the 5th, the first Tuesday of the month, and also on the same day Historic Preservation Commission meeting. Regular business happens at those, at those meetings, nothing to write from back. I think we congrats to Franklin Reporter on the 10th anniversary. I was also in that celebration organized by Franklin Chamber of Commerce. I think we have a good leader, new leader, Nick DiMiglio, he's become very active rallying up the businesses around town. He told me today that he went, actually met another business, and I think Amazon is going to become a member of Chamber of Commerce now, which is great, unlike the previous management. He's very active, and he's doing a great job, and that's what we need in this town, rallying the businesses together and have a strong voice for the town. Talking about businesses, I was invited to a business, I guess, grubbing cutting ceremony on the 17th in the company's leaf house and cannabis business that opened up here. Good event, and their first order of business, they donated, even before opening, they donated $1,000 to the Franklin Food Bank and $2,000 to the Little League team to meet their expert partly. Indeed. And then we have a request from the Marconi Park Foundation to clean up the gazebo and the rock wall there. So thanks to our Township Water Department, they're helping us turn the water on there, so they're going to do the power washing, do some maintenance there so that the rock walls would be more presentable to whoever walks in there. But not the least, October 21st, we are going to have a Diwali celebration. Diwali is, you know, some of you might know, it's a festival of lights. Obviously, billion people celebrate that, people of Indian origin. So last year, we did that at the little community center. We expected about 200 people, I think we ended up having about 400 people. I think Councilman Houdin helped us manage the event last year. So this year, we have, we are moving to Franklin High School in collaboration with the school board, kind enough to give us that hall auditorium there. That holds, holds about 1,000 people, so everybody's welcome. Come and celebrate Diwali, October 21st evening at the Franklin High School Auditorium. I have a lot of cultural programs, vendors, food, free food, so come and enjoy October 21st. Yes, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Did you hear there's free food?
We'll be there.
Assemblyman and a former member here, Shiva Kula, he took my wife and I to a couple of those, and absolutely fantastic. So everyone, you definitely want to go if you can. And again, I got to give props to Representative and a former council member, Shiva Kula, for taking us out there.
Great. So congratulations to the baseball team, and kudos to the deputy mayor for traveling down there to watch them. Franklin Day, as the manager mentioned, is on the 23rd, and then that evening, actually starting at 2:00 p.m. and going to 10:00 p.m., there's a concert at 110 Butler Road in benefit of the food bank. Uncle Tanks will be serving food there, and the band is, it's only two people, but it's, they do Beatles songs, and I'm told they're really, really good. So good food, good music, and a good cause. If you can go there, that would be great. For those who are so persuaded, Happy Rashashan and Yom Kippur coming up, and the car wash at the high school is a scream. It's like when they, they do one car at a time, and there must be like 30 kids around the car, and they spray in, and they're washing, and it's, it's, it's a lot of fun to go to, and it's, of course, for a good cause, the cheerleaders and the football team. And Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinarily, I kind of give a report on what's upcoming. I'm probably going to skip most of that tonight. You know, this thing about meetings, if you give me some latitude, Mr. Mayor, kind of been sitting here thinking. I can talk fast, I just want to, I want to do something here.
Have my hand on the gavel.
Good. Advisory Board of Health, Advisory Recreation Council, Agro-Cultural Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Council, Emergency Life Support Delivery Committee, Environmental Commission, Fire Prevention Board, Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, Housing Authority, Human Relations Commission, Kingston Village Advisory Committee, Library Board of Trustees, Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, Sewage Authority, Shade Tree Commission, Trails Advisory Committee, Open Space Advisory Committee, Financial Oversight, Administration, Land Use, Public Safety, Public Works, Economic Development, and the Somerset Community, Somerset Community Action Board. This council, to my left, at least one up to four sit on all of those committees, and they generally meet monthly, some meet more than once a month. I know because I'm on most of them myself, so I get to go to those meetings, too. If anyone thinks that these nine people that I work for don't put in more than a full-time job's worth of hours a month in their elected positions, they're sadly mistaken. And I don't say that about all of you very often, but I think it kind of irks me a little bit. You know, the, the schedule of council meetings, as the clerk said and the mayor said, are set at the reorganization meeting in January. It has been a longstanding practice of this council, going far back before these council members, that there's opportunities for vacation for all of the people who are here, to include the township attorney, the township clerk, the township manager, so that we can squeeze something in during the summer and not conflict with each other, and still, for most of those committees that I said, meet during the summer as well. And it's not always easy. So I'm done, Mr. Mayor. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson.
And even the Congress takes its recess.
Thank you.
May I, can I have one more announcement?
Yes.
I'm sorry. The HRC chairman just texted me, we have a new junior commissioner, we welcome Rohan Kalidas. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Danielson, last chance to speak. We just got legal advice not to do it.
He just spoke, he was here.
Okay. Council discussion items, the next item, item number 10, for those of you with an agenda, the agendas are up there. Rescheduling a September 26th, 2023 council meeting. The reason is, as was alluded to by the deputy mayor, the planning board is having a special meeting on the 26th, that was the only day they could arrange. They actually conferred with me about what the ordinance was, about having a meeting at the same time as a council meeting, and what it says is you can't have regularly scheduled other committee meetings at the time of a council meeting, but this is not a regularly scheduled one. I've been going to the planning board meetings. If I have to choose, I'll go to the planning board meeting and miss this meeting. I've missed one meeting since I've been mayor, that was when my dog died. And so it means a lot to me if I'm going to be missing a meeting, I'd rather not, and I'd rather reschedule the meeting, so I put this on the agenda, and a date suggested would be the following day, as the manager alluded to, would be September 27th. So I've teed that up, if anyone has other comments.
Mayor, the only question I have, that's, I'm fine with what you're suggesting. If any reason there was a pivot, and the extension that I think was in question was ever requested, granted, or whatever, I'm not involved directly with the planning board, would we then defer back to the 26th?
No, I think we'd, we'd have to have another meeting to change that meeting.
Okay, not a problem.
Then how do we have that?
Just because I've seen stranger things happen, as I'm sure you have, but okay, so the 27th, if that's what you're asking, I mean, I personally am okay with it based on the circumstance. I know we usually never do that.
So I'll take that as a motion for, to move the meeting to the 27th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion? All in favor, I think we could do this by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The meeting, the next meeting of the council will not be on the September 26th, it will be on September 27th.
Mayor, can I, a technical question?
Sure, that would have been best during the discussion portion.
I didn't want, you're on a roll, I didn't want to interrupt, especially the part of your dog, it always gets me. I want to make it clear that what we're doing is we're amending the annual schedule, that that's what the motion was, because if we were just canceling the meeting and holding a special meeting, we would have to then publish the agenda in advance and not be able to deviate from it. So what we're doing, what we actually just did was we made a motion to amend the annual schedule to change the date of the meeting from the 26th to the 27th, and the clerk will publish the annual notice in the same manner that she published it originally.
Hey, does any council member have a problem with that?
No, that was my understanding, based on your request.
I don't know how they could. Is that a problem with that?
Didn't quite mean it that way. Okay, we're all good on that now?
I'm good. Sorry, I was a little slow on the uptake there, Mayor.
Approval of the minutes, I present the following minutes to the Township Council for their approval. Work session, regular meeting of August 28th, I'm sorry, August 8th, 2023, to have a motion to approve the minutes. Moved in second. Any discussion, any corrections? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Embarrassan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Time to pay the bills. Warrants in the amount of $32,74,005.34 on September 12th, 2023 are presented to the Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
I know that the warrants is ready to be paid.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second, and any with discussion, anyone like to pull an item or question an item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Embarrassan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Public hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading, so we have two readings of an ordinance, one is to introduce it, that's the first reading, to let the public know that it's coming up, and the second reading is the one where we consider passing it or not. Ordnance 4418-23, an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset, New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 50, Police Department, Section 50-24, Police Outside Work, Special Police Services is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required to have a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Seconded.
In seconded, all in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we are open to the public on this item only. Councilman Chase.
Here are Chase 159 Old Georgetown Road. I'd just like to mention, in connection with this ordinance, that the Environmental Commission has long wished for an ordinance to require or at least encourage the use of auxiliary power for police vehicles at outside work, so that they can run those lights without running the vehicle idling for hours at a time. We originally suggested this as part of the anti-idling ordinance, but the council has suggested a different way of putting in the anti-idling ordinance that wouldn't include this. But I hope that at some time in the future, you can consider requiring the use of, arranging for the use of auxiliary power to run the flashing lights, and even encourage the contractors for whom this service is provided to use electric vehicles. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, the manager and I discussed this, and I think you had a, you could...
I mean, I think my insight into this is, as far as the police vehicles themselves are concerned, every indication that we're getting from the, the major motor vehicle manufacturer that produces police vehicles, that controls the largest part of the market, is that internal combustion engine police vehicles are pretty much going to be a thing of the past within the next two years. So it's unlikely that this would even need an ordinance, because I think just by default, police vehicles will become electric vehicles for that particular purpose. We did explore the idea of alternative power units, APUs, for police vehicles. Unfortunately, the technology was not well done, because I think that there was a general lack of interest on the part of the market, so that the companies that were producing the units that were installed in police vehicles, there was, they were prone to failure. So we, I think that really what we're going to look at is the fact that the manufacturers will dictate this more so than anyone else. And I think that it's probably something that you will see soon. Currently, electric vehicles that are on the market are really not suited to handle all of the electric demands of a police vehicle, the consumer vehicles right now. And we're, I will tell you that it's not easy for us to purchase vehicles that are suited for police work right now. We budgeted two electric pickup trucks, actually for the construction department, not this past budget cycle, but the budget cycle before. Ford, the only manufacturer of full-size electric pickup trucks, continues to only manufacture the highest of the high-end models and not the base models. So this is, you know, this is what we're up against, but I think that once Ford makes that transition.
We're technically in the public hearing on the stormwater management ordinance.
No.
No, no, we're not. No, we're on, we're on the police outside job rate, and that's where there was a suggestion that this be included. And I can then wrap this up with, this particular ordinance would not be the appropriate ordinance to amend to demand electric vehicles. This is actually an ordinance that lives within the police ordinance of the code, everything from promotions to pay. So if there was a desire to do this down the road for outside job police vehicles, it would need to live somewhere else.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Seeing no one else come forward, Mayor, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt? Anybody?
Moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
Moved in second, and strong work, Council. Any discussion on the item? Basically, this is, the outside job rate is being raised because we weren't getting officers to take the jobs, because they're allowed to go to other towns that were paying more. So we need to have outside jobs filled, and we're basically following market forces. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor embarrassant?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Ordinance number 4419-23, an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset, state of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 330, Stormwater Management Consistent with State Requirements, Chapter 112, Land Development, Achievements, I mean Attachments, 29 and 30, is presented to Township, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kenneth Berkowitz. I live at 7 Mayflower Court in Somerset, in Canal Walk. And I want to thank the Council for their efforts regarding the ordinance on stormwater management. As you, I think, most know, Canal Walk is bordered at least on one side by Metliss Road and Ascena Corridor. Unfortunately, Metliss sometimes acts as a floodplain, okay? It faces the continuous threat of flooding, not next week or in several weeks, but now. Let me just read, if I could, from the AccuWeather report at least two hours ago, okay, for Somerset County. Okay? They forecast cloudy and not as warm with a couple of showers and a heavy thunderstorm. Any thunderstorm can cause flash flooding and gusty winds. The New York forecast is for the potential of a tornado. And you all know, in summertime, things can shift. The winds can move weather one way or the other. You know, I just, we talk here about, this council has heard the discussion of flooding on Metliss, okay? And I just wonder if everyone here is aware of what the flooding looks like. I wonder if, Mayor, if I could submit this and let it be passed?
Tell the clerk when you're done.
Pardon me?
When you're done speaking, you can give it to the clerk.
Give it to the clerk. But can I hold it up in the meantime?
Absolutely.
If you could see it. This is what flooding on Metliss looks like. Okay? I'm sorry. And this is a current, this is a picture within the last two months. Some of you may have already been there and seen that, and it was referred to by a speaker It is urgent that this council declare an emergency and make an ordinance effective immediately because of these factors, not only here in Metliss, but throughout Somerset County, okay? And quite frankly, just in conclusion, I would tell you, I fear that climate change and flooding won't wait several weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board Members. My name is John DeLuca. I'm an attorney with Boris Golden Foley, Vinyolo Hyman and Stahl, and I represent B9 Schoolhouse Owner LLC, among many other developers in the Township of Franklin. I'd like to start my statements by simply saying thank you for your time and your commitment to the residents of this town. I myself, for years, was a resident of this town, so I know that you're devoted to the citizens. But as you likely suspect, I'm here to state an objection to the adoption of this ordinance in its current form, based on its illegal retroactive application to pending development applications. This ordinance may be invalid or unenforceable for additional reasons, but I will be specifically addressing this sole issue of retroactive application. The problematic language appears on page two of the proposed ordinance, which reads in part, "Any application required to Sections A and B above, which has not received final approval prior to the effective date of this ordinance, shall be subject to the provisions of this ordinance. If adopted, this ordinance will be subject to litigation to challenge its legality and validity, just as has occurred with many other ordinances this body has adopted over the past 12 months to obstruct land development in Franklin Township." The other ordinances are invalid for more subtle and technical ways, and I'm sure this is requiring attorneys to spend many hours of legal research, developing legal theories, and crafting well-supported arguments to be successful against the township in Superior Court. Whereas this ordinance is plainly illegal on its face. This ordinance violates the time of the application rule under New Jersey's Municipal Land Use Law. It also runs contrary to New Jersey Department of Education, I'm sorry, Department of Environmental Protections' own guidance on stormwater management rules. First, let's look at the Municipal Land Use Law, Section 10.5, which states, "Those development regulations, which are in effect on the date of submission of an application for development, shall govern the review of that application for development and any decision made with regard to that application for development. This includes completeness, approval, and, most relevant tonight, stormwater management requirements." The seminal Supreme Court case in New Jersey cited by judges and attorneys explaining the time of the application rule is called Dunbar Homes Incorporated versus Zoning Board of Ajudgment of the Township of Franklin. That's right, the primary case on this issue was against this town's very own zoning board. That happened in 2017. Now, aside from the violation of the MOUL, this ordinance also violates NJDEP's own guidance on the stormwater management rule. On August 15 of this year, the NJDEP issued training materials titled Stormwater Management Rule NJAC 7 Colonnate Rural Amendment Training. This training was issued to guide municipalities and other interested parties on the amendments to the New Jersey Stormwater Management Rules, how municipalities may amend their own stormwater management regulations consistent with the new rules, and the applicability of local stormwater management regulations on development applications. If you look at pages 17 and 18 of the Rural Amendment Training, this provides hypothetical examples of how those rules and a municipality's local stormwater management regulations would apply to pending development applications based on the date that application is filed. So it looks at the date of submission. It does not look retroactively to pending applications. That's just illegal on its face. Examples provided by the NJDEP make it perfectly clear that any new local stormwater management regulations may only be prospective, not retrospective. In other words, the NJDEP directed that an application must be reviewed only under regulations that were in place at the time the application was submitted. Regulations, whether state or local, that are adopted after a complete application is submitted, have no bearing on pending applications. As I stated at the beginning of my statements, I cannot speak to the validity of the rest of the proposed ordinance. I'm sure it's very necessary. You need to update these regulations to be compliant with the new state rules. But the language on page two, under subsection 30, 330-3, paragraph D, is clearly illegal. If this council is at all interested in protecting the hard-earned taxpayer dollars, it is my recommendation that you strike that particular language from the ordinance before its adoption. Failure to do so begs the question, why is the council so intent on wasting taxpayer dollars on litigation expenses? Just how many lawsuits have been filed against this council in the last 12 months challenging its ordinances? How many taxpayer dollars have been spent funding those litigations? I doubt I will get an answer to that question tonight, but I promise you, I will get an answer when I file an Oprah request to produce those answers. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your commitment to your residents.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Marlon Kwan, 28 Jase Corner. Just a couple of seconds on the response to this last speaker. Clearly, he is just a very litigious individual to begin with, and he has no, no concern for any of the citizens of Franklin Township. It is amazing to me that all he can do coming up here was threaten this township on litigation. It is beyond belief. I'll just leave it at that. But I wanted to also further discuss and emphasize why the stormwater ordinance is so important. Just in the past Tuesday, I'll give you some facts. It was a hefty 1.74 inches that came down. We had one inch of rainfall in 16 minutes, and one and a half inches of rain in 42 minutes, combination of two 2.52 inches in just about an hour. The primary reason for flash flood warnings, this is an emergency situation. I believe that the statutes in this town allow for an emergency implementation. And so I'm asking the township to implement this on an emergency basis. The saturation, we all know that Franklin Township has high water tables, meaning they're closest to the surface. It is also very clay intense, which means it doesn't absorb water. We're not talking about B9. We're not talking about just Metliss Road. We're talking about Western Canal Road. We're talking about Canal Road. We're talking about many roads and areas that are affected because of the antiquated stormwater tables and stormwater regs. That's why the state of New Jersey spent a whole year warning every township that it was coming down the pike. So I'm imploring you, as council, to implement the emergency status and implement it tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Members of Council, Mayor Kramer, former Mayor Kimberly Francois. First of all, I totally impeach what that gentleman came up and said, the attorney before me. That's absolutely ridiculous, come up and try to threaten us as a town. And how much money you spent, I hope you spent a lot of money protecting the members and the families and homes of Franklin Township. That's what your job is to do. You tax to take money and you spend it for the people, for their future, their homes. That's what you do. So, you know, let him send his stupid Oprah request to determine how much. You could probably, you know, just give the answer anytime you want. But I did want to rise today to support the storm ordinance. You know, I remember when I was about five years old, my neighborhood used to flood, particularly the northern end of it, from Marcy Street up. It flooded horribly. Then the township built a sewer collection system in the neighborhood, and it never flooded again. But it was horrible for, watch as a child, all those homes and those families being wrecked by simple rain. So you fast forward till just a few years ago during Storm Ida, in front of my house, I had about a foot and a half of water in Marcy Street. I have videos of it. It flooded, I mean, very aggressively, just a block away. My neighbor Lenny, his car floated away and then flipped and then was submerged. That's what's happening. Incrementally, this, you know, Franklin Township is being damaged by our stormwater. So you should also know, my legislative office on Elizabeth Avenue, that parking lot often floods. In wintertime, it's a skating rink at some point, because so much water sheets off the wooded air, from the wooded area, from that open field. It's still, there's not enough percolation going on in some places. Stormwater is an issue in Franklin Township. I also encourage the township to be aggressive with the storm sewers. They should be cleaned regularly, not only the pipes, but the basins. I don't know what the schedule is. I think it could be better, but the storm basin should be cleaned out, the lines should be cleaned out, because a blocked-up storm line will slow the movement of the water down and, you know, increase the flooding. So, but with this ordinance, not only do I support it, I hope it becomes immediately effective. Can you tell me when it becomes effective?
20 days from publication.
October 5th. That's October 5th, and is that the soonest it could be effective?
Yes.
Yeah, and regardless of what applications are pending or what projects, they should be subject to this, all of them. If you recognize we have an issue that we have to manage our stormwater, then no one should be not subject to this. Because in the end, you know, these sleazy attorneys that come up and threaten you, they don't live here. They're not going to be damaged. And if their home was under threat, they would be doing everything they could to protect their homes. And as elected official, I know you all are doing everything you can to protect all the residents of Franklin Township equally. And I commend you, and I, Mayor and Council, I commend you for the work you did on this. I commend you for presenting it, and, you know, I look forward to the benefits of it. Thank you very much.
Please return the podium to its original position. Thank you for your comments.
Can you lower the microphone down for her, too, while you're at it?
Thank you, Mr. Danielson.
Hi, I'm Toby Kramer, 55 Bryan Court. I don't have anything prepared, but I'm Bryan Court. We were built with all swales and easements behind and in between all of our houses, because it is such a high water table, and every time it rains, we don't need a flood. It's complete mush. Our basements flood regularly. We always leak water. And most of us have, I haven't done it yet, but we're pricing secondary sump pumps, and they're between $3,000 and $10,000 to try to figure out what to do. And it's like, and we have no choice, because we already have flooding. You saw the picture. Big part of Bryan Court backs up to Metliss, and then there's a big part of Bryan Court that has a sort of a flood reservation behind those. that has a sort of a flood reservation behind those houses, and they always, that area always floods. So I'd like to thank you for your ordinance tonight. I think it's really been a long time coming, but I think, and I thank the state of New Jersey for taking the lead. I want to ask you, I've been told that if you make this an urgent ordinance, it can become effective sooner than 20 days, and we really need that. We're in hurricane season. We have to make sure that we don't have any more building to create more flooding for our neighborhood. And just for the record, I'm a lifetime social worker. I'm very much in favor of creating jobs, and you've said that you've already approved so many warehouses, I think way too many in my opinion. But if you, you know, I think, you know, it would be good for the township of Franklin to do some vocational education where people can get jobs in those warehouses. I'd love to see that myself. So thank you very much. And please vote to make this an urgent ordinance so that it can go into immediate effect. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Nadia Chase, 159 Old Georgetown Road. Actually, I wasn't expecting this.
Mr. Chase, you're on the planning board?
Yes. I am not going to speak about warehouses.
Okay.
I am not going to speak about the application that is before
Start the clock.
the planning board.
Okay.
Actually, I support the general concept of the updated stormwater ordinance, and I know that is, the updating is basically as directed by the State Department of Environmental I noticed a couple of very minor wording points in the ordinance. On Page Three, under the section on Development Lines Two and Three, line two ends with enlarge hyphen, and then line three begins enlargement. Just have part of a word there twice. On Page 23, line one, you could remove both because one of the two alternative methodologies in the previous ordinance has been removed, so now there's only one, so you don't need the word "both." I often wondered why we have such flooding on Metlers Lane. Would a bigger culvert be the answer? I suspect the answer is that it would be better for, a bigger culvert would be better for Metlers Road, but would be even worse for the houses on Bryant Court. And unfortunately, like many things in this whole situation, there was not enough forethought, in this case on the part of the builder, about the possibility of flooding because the street, as mentioned by a previous speaker, the stream which comes from the pond there and goes under Metlers Road through a culvert which is perhaps too small. If it were bigger, then there would be a lot more water in the floodway next to Bryant Court. So I'm not sure what the solution is, or if there is a solution. If you have 2.25 inches of rain in one hour, I don't think anything is going to prevent flooding there, ordinance or no ordinance, culvert or bigger culvert. But, yeah, that's everything I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Angelica Granados, and I live in 2307 Jackie Hall Trail in Canal Walk. I just want to share this story, the cover story of the AARP bulletin about the, how the elderly is changing, changing America. And it talks about the different industries that are being changed because of the elderly. And one of them is healthcare. It talks about, you know, how CBS and other drugstores and even
Excuse me, are you talking about the stormwater? Are you talking about the stormwater?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it says, but the ultimate in healthcare convenience comes in home care that rivals the excellence of hospitals such as NYU Long Joint. It's a trend that is picking up steam. Since last September, 200 mostly older residents of Long Island, New York have received hospital-level treatment for pneumonia and other illnesses. "We take everything from the brick-and-mortar hospital except the bed and bring home," says Jonathan Kelly, the osteopathic physician and medical director of NYU Long Joint Hospital, Long Island Home Hospital Program. That includes nurses, physical therapists.
I'm sorry, can you connect this to the stormwater ordinance?
Yes, okay. It says that the scale of home healthcare movement is huge. Consulting firm Mackenzie &amp; Company estimates 265 billion in healthcare and Medicare beneficiaries will be delivered at home by 2025. And I was just thinking that I think the residents of Canal Walk and other nearby senior communities are following this trend. In Canal Walk, there are some people who are unable to walk by themselves.
Ma'am, you've got to connect this to the stormwater ordinance.
Yes, and 24/7 caregivers, and used to come, some homes in the area may resemble a nursing home. I thought of the 34 people who died in the nursing home in New Orleans during the Hurricane Katrina. With climate change, we often hear of flash flooding. If this happens in Franklin Township, will the town be able to evacuate the residents if necessary? So I don't think that, I think that the inland flood protection rule has to be adopted soon because there is flash flooding, and there are many residents who cannot walk by themselves, who need to be evacuated by the township. And I don't think that it would be possible to do it without all the changes that the stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Forgive me for pushing you to the stormwater ordinance, but now I understand.
Sally Zarek for Constitution Way in Somerset. I'll get right to the point. I've lived in Somerset for 18 years. We have had two massive floods in our basement, two massive floods. We have enough to deal with as a family without continually bailing out our basement from the eight to 10 inches of floods. I've spoke to claim adjusters, and I've spoke to a hydrologist, who have both told me the clay soil in this area, as well as the underground streams, as well as the changing climate, as well as us now going into hurricane season again, are going to be continually impacting our homes in this area. Manville certainly knows that very well, the town next door. I understand legality. I understand laws. Certainly, sometimes the legality is not always just. We've seen that in many instances in history that we've spoken about recently. So I'm not as concerned about the legal side of protecting citizens as I am about senior citizens, children trying to go to school, parents trying to get them to school. We're hitting hurricane season, and I know if we have another severe storm, I'll be bailing water out of my home. If anybody doesn't understand the clay soil implications, the underground streams, and the flooding issues that are continually getting worse due to climate change, due to weather change patterns that are impacting our area, I do see this as an emergency. I see it as a crisis, in fact. And anybody who doesn't can come and help me flood out, unflood my basement, bail out my basement with the next storm. It is an emergency. Please treat it as such and use whatever is in your power to protect your citizens. That is your job, and I thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
I agree with her 100%. My name is Angela Kavalewski. I live on One Hale Place. My sister, her husband, and my niece, their daughter, moved to Canal Walk 20 years ago on 24 Hancock. They never flooded in their basement. They have a sump pump, they have a battery backup. They've replaced sump pumps to make sure everything works properly. With Ida, she almost ended up in the canal that night coming home from work as the cars were drifting in in front of her. She would have been the next one in. The road collapsed a week later. She went over the road with her Mini Cooper. She felt the road go, that was it. She sold her car two days later, her Mini Cooper. She got rid of it. Now she sold her house two days ago. She's moving out of Canal Walk because there is no way to stop the water over there. They never had flooding, but they have it now. The reason it flooded was because the pump and the backup could not, could not get the water out quick enough. There was no place for the water to go. They have a little stream, it's dry most of the time, but during rain season, it's full. And there was no place for the water to go. So she signed a contract two days ago. She's leaving our old aunt who moved there to help. My sister, who was your patient, she died three years ago, and her father died, she died five years ago. Her father died two years ago, so she lost both parents in three years. She feels bad about moving. I said, "Just go." She's moving a mile and an hour and a half away. I said, "Go, don't worry about me. It's your life, you have to do what you have to do." I helped her clean that basement out. She had to get three companies to haul stuff away. Her father liked to keep things, quote, "in the basement." That was the only room he could hoard in, and he had stuff down there. And the old aunt was down there, and she was down there with, he did leave a lot of plastic bags. She said, "Thank you, Dad." He had tons of Costco, the heavy-duty contractor bags, and we just filled them up, filled them up halfway because they were heavy, whatever we could get out. And then she hired a company to remove the rest, three driveways full of stuff. She had to pay three truck people to get stuff out. There were eight men working there, 12 hours, to disinfect, to clean it, disinfect it, get stuff out, and come back a couple days later to remove all the fans. She put all new appliances in her basement. She's fixed the siding that blew off her house when the old yellow rose, which is now called saffron, exploded. Her siding came off. She said, "That's it, I'm going." She powder washed her house, she fixed her patio. I, when she moved down from the upstairs bedroom down, I outfitted her closet, she painted. She's got the house in shape, she put hardwood floors in. She's got a buyer, even before she bought this house, a neighbor's buying it, I don't know why, but he is. And it hasn't happened yet. But I want you to know that it's serious. Someone who's lived there 20 years, never flooded, and had that much water in her basement. And electricians, plumbers, they all had to come in, all new appliances in the basement. She had them check the whole house electrical, she was afraid of fire. She's 20 years younger than I am. I said, "Go, get out, go now." I said, "I'll be gone in a few years, and then you can sell my house and move back in it if you don't like where you go." So that's my story, and it is serious, and I hope you listen. We do need help over there.
Anyone else?
Sudhir Shah, 74 Bryant Court. I'm not going to repeat what some of the people said earlier regarding the stormwater ordinance. I'm sure you guys are going to pass it. From the history, what I know of, that it took almost 16 to 18 months for New Jersey State to develop this ordinance, or to implement this new plan rather, which you guys are planning to implement here in the Franklin Township, is going to take another two months. So we wasted roughly 20 months trying to have this plan implemented in Franklin Township. I don't see any particular reason why we need to delay for another 20 days. It should be implemented today rather, okay? As soon as we approve it. Now, in talking about, you know, other arguments, the other side made it, in terms of, we didn't do this, we didn't do this, we didn't follow this regulation, we didn't follow this law and whatnot, right? Whenever New Jersey State developed this plan rather, they included all the developers and everybody, so they were fully aware about what was going to happen and what is coming down the pike. Most of us have come from background of business planning, business development and whatnot. We look at what is going to happen five years down the road, how I'm going to develop my plan, what are my risks, what are my risks, right? They should have known this is coming down the pike. It may get implemented within 20 years, two years, one year, 15 months, right? They should have developed the plan accordingly and not wait and threaten you guys with a lawsuit. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mayor, seeing no one else come forward, motion to close the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion on the, motion to adopt?
They're moved.
Moved in second and, okay, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, can
Yeah, I'm going to go to you first, absolutely.
Yeah, if I can, I just want to, I just want to comment on a few things. First, this isn't the type of ordinance that we could make effective immediately. I think people were using the word urgent out there. I just want to make sure we understand what we're, what we're doing today. We are adopting model stormwater regulations that the state implemented. They were actually approved on July 17th, I think, of 2023. This is as quickly as we could adopt them. And, you know, people were talking about, well, my basement is flooded, I really want you to make this ordinance effective immediately. This is not one of those kind of ordinances. This isn't an ordinance that's going to make the pipe bigger that Mr. Chase talked about. It doesn't require retrofit of buildings or any of those things. So it's not that kind of emergency. When the law contemplates, when the Faulkner Act contemplates making an ordinance effective immediately, like today, it's the, I mean, give a good example from one of my other towns. We're waiving the fees for generators to be installed because there's a hurricane this weekend. That's something that's imminent, that's going to happen immediately. This is adopting rules and regulations in a form that they don't get adopted immediately. But here's what we did do. We did change the state model ordinance, and I do appreciate when lawyers read the frequently asked questions on a website and they don't actually read the law. I always think that that's interesting. By the way, the lawyers in my law firm don't last very long when they do that. I make them actually read the law. The law says that municipalities are allowed to enact ordinances that are more stringent than the state regulations, and that's what we've done. And of course, we have a, we have a reasonable, we have a rational basis to do that, and we've done that. So that's, that's a pretty aggressive take on it to make it apply to applications that are, that are in effect. You know, I've listened to the developers' attorneys who have, the few of them who have braved coming to these council meetings, and, you know, I have an utmost respect, I consider myself a lawyer's lawyer. I also like that one lawyer's, quote to me, cases that I actually argued in the Supreme Court. I argued that in the Supreme Court when you were in your second year of law school, by the way, just so you know, and I won it. So I understand what the time of application rule says. When you quote the time of application rule, you should quote all of it because some of it says that it doesn't apply to things that affect the public health, safety, and welfare. So you might want to check your inbox because you filed a lawsuit, I think about a month ago, in which you claimed that the two ordinances that we adopted concerning warehouses don't apply to you. But we filed a counterclaim about three and a half hours ago saying that it does apply to you. So I just, I just need you, I just need you to know that. So I think that, once again, to put the stormwater ordinance all in context, it, you know, there are public works projects that can help drainage issues. This is not what this is. This is, these are rules and regulations. They are the most up-to-date standard rules and regulations required by the federal government. required by the federal government and by the state government. So that's what we're going to do. And the last thing, Mayor, if you don't mind for me, one last editorial. And I guess after 40-something years of doing this, I get allowed to do this. If you want to open my legal bills, go right ahead. By the way, stand in line. You wouldn't be the first person who's done it. I'm very happy to do it. But here's my challenge to you. You could have my legal bills. I'll send them to you. Send me yours.
Any any other comments? Any other discussion? I'm going to limit my discussion because in this other lawsuit that was just talked about, every word I said at this council meeting was placed in the lawsuit. So anything I can, anything I say can and will be used against you. But I will say that I, this is so important to me. I went out there. I saw that picture live. Ms. Brand noticed me out there and came to join me. I was just trying to figure out exactly where the flooding was coming from and what we might be able to do to change it. I have an aerospace engineering degree, so that's a fluids degree. So I did look at that with that eye. And that's all I'm going to say about that. But I, it is, it is very important to me. I'm going to stick to what I said. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say anymore about this. Is there any other discussion? Do we have a motion to make the grammatical changes that Mr. Chase mentioned?
You just did a motion to adopt the ordinance.
The answer is, well, except that certainly if there's a motion to amend that would take precedent, but if that's what, if the mayor needs to do, he can do it by consent.
If no one wants to make the motion, that's fine.
If they're, by the way, Mayor, if there are typographical errors that don't change the substance of it, we'll just correct them.
They're not substantive. And actually, what it is, is that the state of New Jersey made those typographical errors, and it was copied and pasted from the model. So I would say just leave it alone. We'll be probably one of 565 municipalities that adopt the same amendments.
Correct.
Okay. So if there's no other discussion, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Thank you. So ordinance on introduction and first reading. Ordinance 4420-23, an ordinance amending the code of township Franklin County of Somerset, state of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter Five, Administration of Government, Section 5-4, Meeting of Township Council, Section B, Agenda, add agenda item, address public comments and questions to the agenda. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law on public hearing, and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Wednesday, September 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Do I have a motion?
Removed.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. So this is just formally adding that new step we have in our agenda, item number seven, address public comments, that the agenda is set by ordinance and we're just making that housekeeping change. Any other discussion?
I think it's a good change.
Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
And now this is a nice ordinance, 4421-23, an ordinance authorizing the lease of certain premises owned by the township of Franklin in the county of Somerset and state of New Jersey to the Franklin Township Baseball League for utilization as baseball league complex. Foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing, and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council to be held on Wednesday, September 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. We have a motion to adopt. So moved, Mayor.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. I think this is pretty self-explanatory and very appropriate that Councilman Vasanella, who has played in that league just yesterday. Just yesterday, just a few years ago. Made the motion. Any other discussion? Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Consent agenda. Items A through AR, as listed in the consent agenda portion of this meeting, are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Wants to pull an item?
No, but I, but I have to, I have to have a motion and a second first.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, discussion. Councilman Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a small thing.
AP, I think, was one of them.
Just so everyone would know, Resolution AD 30, 23355, award purchase to ESCNJ, furnish and install fitness equipment at Neiman Williams Park. And I want to say that this goes back, if anybody remembers, way back in the day, we had a recreation needs assessment dealing with Middlebury Park. And what came out of that is they gave out advice, recommendations on how to refurbish our parks, our parks, so that everything was installed brand-new. Everything that needed updating, we put in. And this is open space money, correct? Some of it's grant money, too.
In this particular case, it's open space trust funds.
Open space money.
This one is, yes.
So I thank everyone for paying the open space tax. And number AP. AP is special because it's Resolution 23367, issuance of a special event permit for Sister to Sister, Inc., Rock One for Life for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Now, the mayor brought up prostate cancer month, and I want to say they go hand in hand because prostate cancer in men and breast cancer in women are two of the most special things that we can go down the list because everybody has them. You know, if you're married, everyone's got one. So I want to thank the mayor for bringing up that commendation. And we should all get together. If you have a wife, a daughter, a sister, breast cancer, you got to knock that out. And for men, you got to check that prostate cancer because that's the thing that could take you out of here, too. So again, these are very two important things. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else want to discuss an item or pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Item number 16, resolutions to be voted on separately. I present the following resolution to Township Council for approval. Resolution 23-371, authorize insertion into the calendar year 2023 municipal budget, Chapter 159, drunk driving enforcement fund, Do we have a motion on the item?
Removed.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Good. All business, 2023 boards, committees, commissions, variances. Do we have any nominations? Madam Clerk, we're now on to item number 18, executive session. I present the following resolution to Township Council for their approval. Resolution 2023, I'm sorry, 23-370, authorize executive session, contract negotiations, AFSCME, 2859, white collar clerk call. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Removed.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, do we have to roll call on that? So Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Well, there being no further action by Township Council, we're going to stop the recordings now. We'll go into the executive session. The only thing we're going to do, come out, is close the executive session and close the meeting. So the taping will stop now. Be well.